For Dudley, Massachusetts is now called to order. Our quorum requirement of fifty registered voters has been exceeded as of six fifty-five P M. The count is seventy-two, and as such, we will continue with our meeting. Any non-residents, guests, or visitors must move forward to the front row of the auditorium at this time. You should have one of these yellow cards with you, either the front row. Mr. Sage, you're fine right there. I got that as the front row. If anybody else needs to move, now's the time, please. All right, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening as a very important part of the democratic process here in the town of Dudley. As a reminder, for decorum and procedure in accordance with the Town of Dudley bylaws governing our town meeting, please remove all hats for the duration of the meeting, with the exception of active-duty military or other uniformed municipal or state officers. At this time, I'd like to call everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance and then remain standing for a brief moment of silence. One second. Sorry about that. Normally, it'll be right over there by Town Clerk Smith. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its beauty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Take a moment to reflect on those who faithfully served our town as elected officials, employees, and contributed time in other ways to the town of Dudley. Their energy, effort, and attention helped make Dudley an outstanding town to reside in and allows us the opportunity to continue in a great manner. Thank you. For this evening, we will be hearing from a variety of board members from our town government. All our elected and appointed officials are serving the town in varying capacities, and it's important to acknowledge their efforts and dedication to our residents of the town of Dudley. Before we jump in and hit our articles this evening, I share a couple of announcements related to this evening's procedure, as well as some information about process as we move through the night. The town meeting will be continued tomorrow evening, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M., only if necessary. My hope is that we will recess and adjourn this evening at ten-thirty, and that we will not take up any new business after ten-fifteen P M., unless it will save us an extra night. It is likely that we will be out of here before the end of the first half of the Celtics game. Several procedural notes and reminders for this evening, and if needed, tomorrow evening. Please be sure that you turn off all cell phone ringers. If you must use your phone to talk with others, please do so in the cafeteria or outdoors where there is a signal. Procedural rules or accordance with the Town bylaws of Dudley are available via the Town Clerk, the Town website, and public library. If you are in doubt on a specific point, you should consult the primary sources of authority, the Mass General Law, bylaws of the Town of Dudley, and Roberts Rule of Order. Use of the restrooms. As you know, this evening, residents and voters came in, you received a clicker. On your way out to utilize the restroom out in the cafeteria area, please leave this at the door. When you return, you will receive another clicker that will work just as well as the first. Exiting in an emergency, please utilize the nearest egress located at the back of the auditorium into the cafeteria and to the outdoors, as well as up here on stage to the left and the right. To be recognized this evening, please stand at the microphone located in the middle aisle. Be sure that you state your name and address so that we have a clear answer for the record. If it is necessary for you to speak to more than one article or return to that microphone, please be sure to state your name and residence for each subsequent article. It's not necessary for rebuttal conversation. Please note that we have a rented sound system here this evening. Shepherd Hill was gracious enough to provide us a sound system. They've been having some difficulties with that. We should not experience any problems, but if we do, please just be patient and be kind. We will work through all of them if there are any technology problems. Through unanimous consent, I request that clarification for a department budget item or other article be required, that employees or agents who are not residents but acting on behalf of the Town of Dudley or petitioners of the article be permitted to speak. Are there any in opposition to this rule this evening? Seeing none and hearing none, we will permit those from outside the town to address department budget-related or article-related comments or questions. As a point of information, we have Town Council Jeff Blake with us this evening, who may be consulted at times or may be able to provide clarification on any legal information that we need clarification on. For debate, you must speak only to the issues. If I determine the comments are not germane to the issues, I will interrupt and instruct you to move on or conclude your remarks. You may not make personal remarks about others or impugn their motives. You may not cheer or jeer points made by members of the public, except for the petitioner and certain town officials. You may only speak twice to a motion, and your comments are limited to a specific time limit. All questions must be addressed through the chair. If you do ask a question, you do not lose the floor and answer is not counted as part of your speaking time. As Robert Tools of Order, permit ten minutes of speaking time per petitioner. I ask that through unanimous consent for a rule for this meeting, that we limit debate to five minutes per speaker. Are there any objections to adopting that rule for this evening? That's fantastic. The Celtics tip is looking great. Through unanimous consent, there will be a five-minute limit per speaker for all of this meeting's debates. Voting has typically been done by voice vote, except in situations where a two-thirds vote is required. However, with the use of our clicker technology, voting will not be by voice this evening, unless we have technology issues, as we experienced a couple of years ago, that would prevent the use of our clicker system. So I'm going to turn it over. For a brief overview of our clicker system that you can play along with, please note that one of the questions in this sample might require us to repoll and reset. So we'll go ahead and walk you through that process right now. So everyone has a response key card. To vote yes, you press one or A, and to vote no, you press two or B. If you push the wrong button, press again to change your vote. The last button you push, all voting is open, will register. Response cards will only work at this meeting. Please do not take them home. Please leave them here this evening. Return response cards to the box at the exit whenever you are leaving our auditorium. A successful vote is shown with a green light and one A on the L C D screen on the left. A successful no vote is a green light and two B on the L E D screen. And a vote that's not registered is a red light and nothing displayed on the L C D So we're going to go ahead and get our clicker technology. If you can grab your clickers, use either your right or left hand, and either answer yes or no to the question, is today Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two? One A is yes. Two B is no. Notice in the lower right-hand corner, the counter is clicking down. We're down to five seconds to record your vote. And we see that only seven percent of us do not know the correct date today. That's excellent. That could have been a plant. Ms. Smith, can you come on up and dispense with the reading of the warrant?
To either of the constables in the Town of Dudley in the county of Worcester, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Dudley qualified to vote in elections in Town affairs to meet in the Connie Vane Co. Galley Auditorium at Shepherd Hill Regional High School in said Dudley on Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, and Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, if needed, and any other such times as may be voted, if needed, at seven P M., then and there to take action on the following articles.
And can you certify the delivery of the warrant?
You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the Dudley Municipal Center and on the Town of Dudley website, and by posting said notice of availability on the warrant of the warrant on one cable access channel. Warrant to be posted at least seven days before holding of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the Town Clerk at the time of the holding of said meeting. Given our hands on this tenth day of May in the year of two thousand twenty-two. Signed, John J. Marcy, Chairman, Jason Johnson, Vice Chairman, Stephen Sullivan, Clerk, Carrie Siganovich. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Dudley by posting up attested copies of the same at the Dudley Municipal Center on the tenth of May, two thousand twenty-two. I also observed it posted on the Town's website and notice of availability on the day of Dudley Cable Access Channel on the tenth of May, two thousand twenty-two, thereby making my return to the Dudley Town Clerk on the tenth of May, two thousand and twenty-two. Signed, Mark A. Landry, Constable for the Town of Dudley.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, before we jump into the articles tonight, Candidates Night for our town election that's coming up in June is on June sixth. The Candidates Night will be held at the Town Hall. There's information available on the Town website, as well as up on the Town's Facebook page, if you're looking for more details. I look forward to moderating the event, where all candidates will have an opportunity to introduce themselves to the community and the general public. In contested races, we'll have questions posed to the candidates, so members of the public can learn more about the candidates' platforms and thoughts as they enter into the election. Memorial Day weekend is coming along this coming weekend. I encourage all citizens of the Town of Dudley to participate in honoring the memories of those who served and lost their lives in defense of our great nation. Well, let's jump right on in, get down to business, while we all came. Article one, to see if the town will vote to receive the reports of several of the several town officers in all committees or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The F A A recommends that you pass Article one as written in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? All right, let's grab those clickers. All in favor of approving Article one as printed in the warrant? Normally, I'd say I, one A, and two B for none. Motion has passed unanimously. Uh, majority, sorry. I jumped in, I didn't see the three. Is anybody having difficulty seeing the lower right-hand corner because of the podium? All right, I'll see what I can do. That should make things a bit better for you. Article two, hear committee recommendations, to hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Appropriation and Advisory Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you pass Article two as written in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, one A, all opposed, two B. Passes with a majority. Article three, Board of Selectmen, F Y twenty-three budget, to see if the town will vote to determine the sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town, and provide for a reserve fund determining the compensation for elected officials and including debt and interest for the ensuing fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand twenty-two, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you pass Article three as written in I S O M. All right, the F A A recommends you approve Article three as printed herein, including the sources and uses of funds as recommended by the F A A, totaling twenty-three million six hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, to defray the charges and expenses of the town, and provide for a reserve fund, determine the compensation of elected offices for the ensuing year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and include payment of debt and interest. The F A A recommends you approve this article in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, one, or A, all opposed, B, or two. Motion carries with a clear majority. Article four, authorize revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish fiscal year two thousand twenty-three spending limits for the revolving funds set forth in Chapter thirty-four, Sections thirty-four, five. Authorize revolving funds of the Town's general bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. The revolving funds will be listed, and the annual spending limits will be identified here. Animal care, fifteen thousand dollars. Arrest warrant services, ten thousand dollars. Board of Health Education Programs, one thousand dollars. Cemetery fees, Board of Selectmen, which began eleven-six, two thousand twelve, five thousand dollars. C O A meals began eleven-nineteen, two thousand twelve, five thousand dollars. Police cruiser at police details, fifty thousand dollars. Electric charging stations, ten thousand dollars. Fire outside details, twenty-five thousand dollars. Fire penalties and violations, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Firearms permit services, twenty thousand dollars. Genealogy service through the Town Clerk, three thousand dollars. The gift shop, two thousand dollars. Highway cleanup, fifty thousand dollars. Gifts to town, fifty thousand dollars. Hazardous material collection, nine thousand dollars. Inspectors' fuel, gas, plumbing, and wire, eighty thousand dollars. Library loss books, five thousand dollars. Municipal hearings for the Board of Selectmen, two thousand dollars. Planning documents, one thousand dollars. Regulatory compliance, seventy-five thousand dollars. Tax and title fees, seventy-five thousand dollars. Monitor testing for the former dump, seventy-five thousand dollars. Veterans' bricks and memorials, six thousand dollars. And website expenses, four thousand dollars. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you print, approve Article four as written in the warrant in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion for Article four? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on Article four. A, one, yes. B, two, no. Motion passes with a clear majority. Article five, fund employee merit pool, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars and zero cents from free cash to fund merit-based increases for non-union employees for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you pass Article five as written in the warrant in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article five. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote for Article five. One A, yes. Two B, no. Clear majority, ninety-one percent. Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, or some such sum, to fund the balance of the cost of recertification of real estate and personal property values for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as required by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you pass Article six as written in the warrant in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion for Article six? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. Ninety-two percent majority. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars to fund the cost of cyclical inspections of all properties in town that have not been inspected in the past ten years for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as required by the State Department of Revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends that Article seven be passed over to the fall town meeting in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article seven until the fall special town meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. Article seven, ninety-three percent majority. Article eight, accept a portion of Piazza Road, to see if the town will vote to accept a portion of Piazza Road modified by plan of land entitled modification to existing definition subdivision plan dated June eighth, two thousand five, and recorded in Plan Book eight thirty-six, page one twenty-five, also referenced by Planning Board as Grand View Estates, Section two, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you approve Article eight as printed in the warrant in I S O M.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Sorry, I missed the second. Is there any discussion for Article eight?
John Breier, Flaxfield Road. I just want to confirm that the highway department has expected the road, and it's in the condition acceptable for the town, and also that the Selectmen and the Planning Board have okayed this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Breier. Who would like to address that question? Mr. Marcy, thank you.
I'd like to call the planner to answer that one. Hello, Phil Scannell, Town Planner. Planning Board engineer went out and inspected the road and found that it met all the town subdivision standards. The Planning Board then voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that that road be accepted. I believe the Selectmen had required a public hearing on the layout, and the Board also agreed to have the road accepted in the meeting.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and make our vote for Article eight. All in favor, one, all opposed, two. Majority, ninety-two percent, pass. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to accept the gift of certain parcel of land from Huguenot Development Corporation situated in the Town of Dudley, County of Worcester, Massachusetts, being shown as open space on a plan of land entitled modification of existing definition subdivision plan, Plan of Land, Piazza Road, dated May one, two thousand five, and recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book eight thirty-six, Plan one two five. The parcel contains plus or minus nine point two-three acres, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A is going to defer to the Board of Selectmen for motion, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Marcy.
Board of Selectmen, I move to approve Article nine as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded for Article nine. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Jerry Frank Cosway wrote, is there public access to this property? Is that what the skinny thing is there that goes at the end of a turnabout?
Mr. Ritter?
There is public access, and this also gives the ability to the town to enter onto the property and provide improvements.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion for Article nine? Yes.
Good evening, Derek Donahue, Misty Middle Lane, five. Just curious if there was any potential for this land to be sold off at some point to another developer or be built upon?
Mr. Ritter?
No, there's no potential for that.
Additional question or discussion related to Article nine? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. Clear majority, ninety-two percent. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash two hundred eight eighty thousand dollars, or some such sum, as a supplemental appropriation to the Dudley Charlemagne Regional School District budget for use in F Y twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you approve Article ten as printed in the warrant in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion for Article ten? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead to vote. All in favor, one, all opposed, two. Eighty-one percent, clear majority. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of three hundred eighty thousand, three hundred eighty thousand dollars and zero cents, to rebuild, restore, and renovate the Fun Zone Playground located at seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass., and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under inconsistent with Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other source of authority, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
The F A A recommends you pass over Article eleven to the fall twenty-three, fall special town meeting in I S O M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion to pass over? Yes, sir.
Calling up praise on Ten Lakeside Drive. By reading this right, that you are passing over this article, or it's recommended that we do, so that a fundraiser can be held to raise donations for this project, and if so, is there a plan as to how this fundraiser will be held and how donations will be collected?
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
You're reading it correctly, and there is a plan that is underway. It'll be spearheaded by a local group that will announce themselves soon, but I don't want to be the one to say it at this point.
Additional discussion for Article eleven. Ms. Smith?
If we're going to be fundraising to raise funds for that playground, could we vote on it now, but the borrowing started? I know it's a very active playground, and a lot of people like to use that playground. We do have the Mason Road in the Dudley El, but people can't use that during the day when the school is out. I'm just afraid if we wait until the fall to borrow the money, by the time we get the fundraising in order, it's going to put it behind that much further.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Yes, Mr. Breier?
I ask that we pass this over. When I first saw this article, my first inclination was, does it come with a three- or four-part garage to? It's an extra. Uh, it's an extraordinary amount, um, and I really think, uh, to get a better handle. I understand that the insurance company, you know, isn't just going to allow us to fix a slide and it's got to be totally redone, but I really, that's a lot of money and I think we should pass it over to the fall town meeting and, uh, see if we can get some better prices.
Thank you. Any additional discussion for Article eleven? Seeing and hearing none. We'll go to our vote. All in favor of passing over Article eleven? One for I, two for nae. Article twelve, purchase of a new fire engine to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to sum of seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents or some such amount for the purchase of a new Engine Three fire truck as recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee to be included on the Fire Department's Capital Improvement Plan and to meet said appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen to authorize to borrow such sum under inconsistent with Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other source of authority and to issue bonds and notes to the town there, of the town therefore. Said amount shall be subject to a Proposition Two and a Half Dead Exclusion Ballot Question in accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one, C, Paragraph K, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
I move that the town borrow the sum of seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars as recommended by the FAA purposes and with the authorizations that stated in Article twelve, you warrant subject to the successful passage of the so-called Proposition Two and a Half, Two and a Half Dead Exclusion Ballot Question. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on Article twelve? Mr. Breier?
I'm sorry to be like the rain on the parade here, but that's a lot of money again and it seems like the town is spending a lot of money lately on a lot of different things. And I know we have the Capital Improvement Committee and I know they do their due diligence. What is the urgency? What is the situation with the current fire truck that we have to spend three-quarters of a million dollars on the new one? I'd just like to know that.
Chief Coach, ask him.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The, uh, truck we're trying to replace is almost twenty-six years old. Um, it's in deplorable condition. It's our rescue truck. Uh, it's, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on it repairing it for a truck that's worth about five thousand dollars. Engine two and Engine Three were purchased at the same time in nineteen ninety-five to defray the cost of replacing two vehicles at the same time. We found a used engine to replace Engine Two. Uh, I cannot do that with Engine Three because then you'll be in the same position in seven to ten years from now and it's still guaranteed I'll find a good used engine like we did with this Engine Two. So I need to replace Engine Three at this point because we're just throwing money at it. I mean, it was three years ago the truck burst into flames. And these trucks, that's what they cost and the price is just going to keep going up. And over the last eleven years since I've been chief, I've reduced the fleet. We had four engines. I did not replace Engine Four. We just took that out of service so we went down to three engines. Um, when we got the grant for the forestry truck, um, I replaced, I put two forestry trucks out of service and replaced the debt one. So I've always tried to do cost-saving measures, but we're at the point where I have to replace this truck. And just for, uh, uh, just so people know, I did it based on what we borrowed from the ladder truck over the three-year period. Um, the effect on the check tax rate would be twenty-one cents. It would be, uh, sixty-three, seventy-three a year over the life of the three-year loan, which comes out to fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents a quarter.
Thank you, Chief. Is that Mr. Fox I see?
Peter Fox, Twelve Ridge Drive. I support this article because I think it's most important that we maintain our fire department properly. As the Chief said, this, uh, this engine is twenty-six years old and it's just about useless and falling apart. We need to replace it now and not a few years from now, so I urge the voters to support this article.
Is there any additional discussion for Article twelve? Seeing and hearing none. Quicker time. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. I know that a fifteen-second music clip is probably not doing, but it'd be great. For next year, maybe. A little soft jazz. Uh, seventy-nine percent majority. Article thirteen, regulatory and compliance grants, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund the sum of one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents for the purposes of funding administrative costs, matching fees and project costs associated with regulatory and compliance testing, grant funding application, and administration, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you approve Article thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion for Article thirteen? Seeing and hearing none. As a reminder, this vote does require two-thirds majority. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to sum of one hundred five thousand doll, one hundred, one thousand five, we were working with big numbers a little earlier, sorry. Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to sum of one thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents for the purchase of signed banners and associated materials to be used for public events or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you approve Article fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article fourteen? Seeing and hearing none. We'll call for a vote on Article fourteen. One for yes, two for no. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Treasurer with approval from the Board of Selectmen to borrow four hundred ninety, four hundred ninety thousand dollars and zero cents or some such sum to be expanded upon, to be expanded under the control of the Highway Department as follows. The town appropriate four hundred ninety thousand dollars and zero cents or some such sum for improvements to private way access to the Tobin Farm subdivision, including incidental and related costs for said improvements and to meet said appropriation. The Treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow some sum, some such sum. Can we do away with the alliteration? Such sum under and consistent with Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other source of authority and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. And further, the Board of Selectmen acting pursuant to the authority granted under General Law, Chapter eighty, and the town's road betterment by law, shall assess betterments on all property benefited for the purpose of recovering the cost thereof or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen moves to pass over Article fifteen for purposes of additional information as requested by a meeting of the Betterment Petitioners until the fall special town meeting. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article fifteen at the request of the road betterment petitioners for purposes of additional information until the fall town meeting. Is there any discussion for Article fifteen? Seeing and hearing none. We call Article fifteen to evoke one for yes to pass over until the fall town meeting and two for no. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Treasurer with approval from the Board of Selectmen to borrow two hundred eighty thousand dollars and zero cents or some such sum to be expanded under the control of the Highway Department as follows. The town appropriate two hundred eighty thousand dollars and zero cents or some such sum for improvements to the private way access to the Misty Meadow subdivision, including incidental and related costs for said improvements and to meet said appropriation. The Treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under and consistent with Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other source of authority and to issue bonds and notes to the town, there, of the town therefore. And further, the Board of Selectmen acting pursuant to the authority granted under General Law, Chapter eighty, and the town's road betterment by law, shall assess betterments on all property benefited for the purpose of recovering the cost thereof or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen recommends to pass over Article sixteen for purposes of additional information as requested by a meeting of the Betterment Petitioners until this fall special town meeting. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article sixteen. This is a pass over to the fall town meeting for purposes of additional information at the request of the road betterment petitioners. Seeing and hearing none for discussion. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Treasurer with approval from the Board of Selectmen to borrow one hundred five thousand dollars and zero cents or some such sum to be expanded under the control of the Highway Department as follows. The town appropriate one hundred five thousand dollars and one, and zero cents or some such sum for improvements to the private way access to the Patrick Hill subdivision, including incidental and related costs for said improvements and to meet said appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under and consistent with Mass General Lodge, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other source of authority and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. And further, the Board of Selectmen acting pursuant to the authority granted under General Law, Chapter eighty, and the town's road betterment by law, shall assess betterments on all property benefited for the purposes of recovering the cost thereof or take any other action relative thereto. Uh, Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you approve Article seventeen as printed in the warrant. I so move.
Uh, that motion's been made and seconded. Uh, for purposes of clarification, uh, can I just talk to you up there? That motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion for Article seventeen? Prior to passing Article seventeen to a vote, just a reminder, this does require a two-thirds majority vote. We'll be pushing it to that vote now. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. That does pass our two-thirds threshold. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the official Dudley zoning, uh, Dudley zoning map by applying the Business Fifteen Overlay District to nine properties on South Bridge Road identified as Assessor's Map two-two-nine, Parcels Number one-four-six and one-five-four, as shown on the map entitled Proposed Business Fifteen Overlay District on South Bridge Road. Set proposed amendment zoning map attached as Appendix A and to amend the description of the Business Fifteen Overlay District in Section two-point-zero-one-point-zero-one of the zoning bylaws, Establishment of Districts, by deleting the following strike-through words: Business Fifteen, Business or General Residential Overlay District, striking along portions of West Main Street. See official zoning map or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen recommends that this article be referred to the Planning Board for recommended action.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you. Um, on Article eighteen, the Planning Board held a public hearing. Um, basically this article came to us when two Leonards on South Bridge Road approached the Planning Board about opening small businesses. However, the residential zoning did not allow for business use in this area. The Planning Board believes the small-scale businesses are suitable there. After discussion, the Board suggested Business Fifteen Overlay District. This will allow landowners to engage in uses allowed in the Business Fifteen District by leaving the underlying zoning in place, uh, to indicate the zoning change was acceptable to other landowners. The proposed dis, in the proposed district, the applicant submitted a petition with signatures of the owners agreeing to the change. At its April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board held a required public hearing on the proposed amendment. Upon closing the hearing, the Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment to the town meeting. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article eighteen? Yes. Thank you. Do your patients.
Hi, Maureen Schickering, Schickering Road, Dudley. Um, I got a question. I don't see a map showing where this is located that you want to change it.
In the, uh, in, in the warrant that was available at the front desk, uh, there's Addendum A and Addendum B, uh, but we can pull those up here, uh, for viewing.
So where exactly are we looking at? Okay, so how far along are you going to, uh, for the businesses? From where to where? Do we know?
Yes, let's get a representative.
Yeah, give me a little more exact here.
Hi, Will Scannell, Town Planner. How you can see, the area approval is the area that would be placed into the Business Fifteen Overlay District. It includes nine lots. Um, they're shown on the map here basically between, uh, South Bridge Road and, I'm playing about a river, something on the east side. I think it's sixty-two South Bridge to eighty-six South Bridge Road, something, something like that, but they're nine lots shown over there.
All right, so right now that's residential. You want to let businesses go?
Yes, the purpose of the Overlay District is to allow the residential zone to stay in place, but to put an additional district on top of it which allows them to do uses in the Business District.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions for Article eighteen? Seeing and hearing none will move Article eighteen to be invoked. This does require a two-thirds majority. All in favor, A. All opposed, B. Definitely two-thirds threshold. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to may amend the official Dudley zoning map by replacing the existing groundwater aquifer protection overlay district with a revised groundwater. a revised groundwater aquifer protection overlay district, as shown on the map entitled Proposed Groundwater Aquifer Protection Overlay District Based on Approved Zone Two. Send a proposed amended zoning map attached as Appendix B, and to amend Section ten-point-zero-four-point-zero-zero of the zoning bylaws, Establishment and Delineation of Groundwater Protection District, by adding the following underlined words and deleting the following strike-through words as depicted below. Ten-point-zero-four-point-zero-zero, Establishment and Delineation of Groundwater Protection District. For the purposes of this district, there are hereby established within the town certain groundwater protection areas consisting of aquifers or recharge areas which are delineated on the map. This is entitled Strike Groundwater Protection District, Town of Dudley, dated March nineteen-ninety-two, insert Proposed Groundwater Aquifer Protection Overlay District Based on Approved Zone Two, May of twenty-twenty-two. This map is hereby made a part of the town zoning bylaw and is on file in the office of the town clerk, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen recommends that this article be referred to the Planning Board for recommended action.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you. On Article number nineteen, Dudley has a groundwater protection overlay district in place for many years. The purpose is to regulate land use in areas that recharge the town's wells in order to prevent contamination of the water supply. The original district was based in part upon an interim wellhead protection area, which is drawn as a simple half-mile radius around the well. Since that time, the town has delineated the actual recharge area that supplies water to the wells. This is known as the Zone Two, and is based upon a delineated hydrogeology study. The purpose of this article is to replace the interim wellhead protection area with the actual Zone Two, to only regulate the area that contributes to, contributes water to the wells. At its April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two Planning Board meeting, the Board held a required public hearing on the proposed amendment. Upon closing he- the hearing, the Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this amendment to town meeting, and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion for Article nineteen. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move Article nineteen to a vote, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. Eighty-nine percent, exceeds that two-thirds threshold. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend the official Dudley zoning map by changing the zoning district of the property, identified as Assessor's Map two-one-one, Lot nine from conservation to residential eighty-seven, as shown on the map entitled Zoning Map Amended, Rezone Map two-eleven, Lot nine to residential eighty-seven. Said proposed amendment zoning map, February twenty-twenty-two, attached as Appendix C, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen recommends that this article be referred to the Planning Board for recommended action.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board voted unanimously tonight that we would like to have this article passed over, and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over, discussion for Article twenty to be passed over? Yes. Mr. Simzak, am I right? Excellent. Your eyes are still working even though I'm in the dock, I guess.
I joined Simzak's field day up. Uh, this particular article was submitted by a family that had had a, uh, looking for their area to be restored to its highest and best use. At the time this occurred, they believed it was way back in the nineties, when a parent who owned this property was non-knowledgeable about how hearings were held, et cetera, but it was not his intent, they felt, to change that into a conservation situation, which made his land, his sixteen acres, virtually useless. He did donate land, or did protect his southern land, he owns a big piece of farmland in Dudley, and he did put that in so that it would be protected and development would occur, but it was not the intention that he felt that was the use to this. This land is virtually useless to these people. Under the current zoning, this simply would restore back to them their highest and best use, that they could do whatever they wanted to do with the property. And, and the zoning, by increasing it to the eighty-seven thousand square feet, still allows for it to be sizable parcels if they were to look to do something by the family selling or whatever, but right now it remains virtually useless at this point. And the, uh, originally, I think, at the Planning Board hearing, they were talking about eight lots, that's not what these people are looking for. They're looking for the opportunity to potentially have a piece of land that is not buildable, developable, and that still remains to be seen if it were perked, to comply with zoning that offers them that opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bright?
Having served on the Planning Board for years, uh, I think this sets a very dangerous precedent. When you ha- when you place something in conservation, you are saying, yes, I am willing to forego development rights, I am willing to make this land worthless, and in exchange, you're gonna tax me very little, if anything, on that land. So the owners of this land, if this was done in the nineties for the last thirty years, have paid almost zilch in property taxes on this piece of land. And now, that maybe someone has passed from one generation to the other, you know, they say, hey, you know, we could actually make a lot of money on this, let's get it moved out, uh, of conservation and put it into the rez, and let's develop it now. After all, we've had thirty years of paying no taxes on the land. Um, I'm all for passing it over, I, if, if it wasn't, I'd go for the outright defeat of it this, today. Uh, but I just think it, it sets a very dangerous precedent. Conservation land is conservation, it should be there and kept that way, otherwise, don't put it in conservation to begin with, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, my, my feeling about the, uh, passover is definitely to gain more additional information and understanding as we enter into the special town meeting in fall, uh, understand the number of potential parcels, understand the, uh, the background into potential development of that land, so we can make a very informed decision prior to changing any zoning. Uh, that's, that's my two cents. Uh, any other additional discussion for, uh, Article twenty? Yes?
Uh, Colin Humphries, Ten Lakeside Drive. I'm actually very happy about this decision to pass it over, uh, I'm familiar with the area, it's a very beautiful wooded area, and it's in conservation land for a reason. That's to protect the environment, to protect the entire, protect the environment of this town. It seems that we know very little about what this is actually gonna do, uh, there's a lot of confusion amongst members of the town, as I can hear here tonight, clearly the Planning Board was not ready to move forward on this, so, I mean, if we don't know what we're doing, I think we should do the right thing and keep this in conservation, it's obviously there for a reason. I think it's a good decision to pass this over for the environment of our town.
Thank you. Yes?
Jason Carlson, fifteen Marsh Road, uh, actually adjacent to this property. Uh, it was my understanding at the town meeting, this property was put into conservation back in nineteen-sixty-nine, not the nineties. Um, this is watershed, uh, for Pierce Point Pond. It's, right now it's full water, turtle pools, and all sorts of, uh, wildlife, uh, a lot of amphibians, turtles, deer, coyotes, turkeys. Um, and there's no reason to pull the whole thing out of conservation. Uh, if they want to take a small portion of it that is actually usable for housing, then I see no problem, but the twelve sixteen acres is just absurd, so, that's it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion for Article twenty's passover? Mr. Fox?
Peter Fox, twelve Ridge Drive. In my opinion, conservation is conservation land. We should leave it alone and not start developing conservation land. Keep it the way it is.
Yes?
Jerry Frank, Hussey Road, can you just clarify with the vote is now, is it to pass it over to the fall meeting, or can we, so, if we voted no to pass it over, does the article as it stands come back up for a vote?
Uh, the motion on the floor is to pass over Article twenty and two of the fall town meeting. Mr. Fox, you're next.
I can be clear on that point, if we have a majority vote of no on the passover, this gets voted on tonight, correct?
Yes, that's correct, if there's another motion on the floor to go ahead and move forward, and there's a second, yes, absolutely. Mr. Fox?
Can the motion and the recommendation to pass over, can that be amended and changed so that this vote could be defeated?
Yes.
Then I would like to make a motion that we amend this motion to either vote for it or vote against it.
We've got a motion to amend. Just as a point of, a point of order and process, uh, I'm gonna recommend that we withdraw the amendment, we move forward with the vote to pass over. If that is defeated, we can go ahead and put this to a vote for either, uh, accept, accept this, or deny it, as it is. Mr. Fox, I'll let you consider the withdrawal of the motion to amend.
I, I'd like you to repeat what you just said, please?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that you withdraw the motion to amend, so we can go ahead forth with the vote to pass over. If that is denied, then we'll be going to vote on the original article.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to amend.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, given lack of this new information, I would like to reclar- to change my position a little bit. I recommend that we vote no to defeat the motion to pass this over, as, from my understanding, this number of parcels is way too much, as the gentleman stated, um, there is wildlife in the area that is protected for a reason, I think we should pass, defeat the motion to pass this over, and defeat this right here and now.
There any additional discussion for Article twenty? What we are gonna be voting on right now is to pass over Article twenty-two to the fall town meeting. We'll move that to a vote, one for yes to pass over, two for no to pass over. That's a majority, fifty-two percent, the passover has failed. We move to address a motion for Article twenty.
Motion to consider the approval of Article twenty, uh, regarding the Planning Board zoning amendment?
Motion's been made and seconded for the approval of the zoning amendment, as proposed by the Planning Board, is there any discussion? Mr. Bright?
I believe he may have made a motion for something he may not want to do, right now, the way it, since the motion to pass over failed, now, we would actually vote, as is, on the motion, and what, a yea vote would be to approve the zoning change, a nay vote would be to defeat it, so you don't need to actually make a motion to do what you want to do. Does that make sense?
It does, however, he did make the motion, it was seconded, we are-
Okay.
We do have a motion on the floor to approve this, or to deny, whichever the will in town meeting is. Yes. In order to pass this, does require a two-thirds majority, seeing no additional discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, one, all opposed, two. And the timer has started. The motion has failed, which is what you wanted, yes. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer from account number zero-zero-six-one-zero-zero-three-five-nine-zero-zero-one, water retained earnings, sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents as follows, the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents, seventy-five thousand dollars, to account number, please note, there is a script errors in this account number, I'll read it as it should be reflected, zero-zero-six-one-four-five-zero-five-seven-zero-zero-zero-two, water operating expenses, and the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents to account number zero-zero-six-one-four-five-zero-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-two, water capital, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you pass Article twenty-one, was printed in the warrant, I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion about Article twenty-one? Seeing none, Article twenty-one will push to a vote, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. I have a clear majority there. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to add the following to the bylaws, Section ninety-five dash one, annual town meeting. Unless otherwise established by vote of the Board of Selectmen, all citizens' petitioned warrant articles submitted pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, or inclusion on either an annual or special town meeting warrant, must be delivered to the Board of Selectmen's office prior to the date set by the Board of Selectmen for closing of the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen, uh, moves to approve Article twenty-two as recommended and printed in the warrant. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded, sorry, I'm having a tough time with the fan up here. Uh, is there any discussion for Article twenty-two? Yes? Just, uh, your name and address again, please.
Uh, Colin Humphries, Ten Lakeside Drive. I would just like to seek some clarification on this, um, where are petitions currently required, petitioned warrant articles currently required to be sent for the town meeting, and why is it being changed to the Board of Selectmen's office?
Mr. Ruda?
Uh, this article was recommended by town council to codify what we're doing currently.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions for Article twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, we'll pass Article twenty-two to a vote, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. All opposed, two. Eighty-eight percent majority pass. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3, jet, section 257-14 as all, deletions shown in strike through and additions are shown in bold underlined text. Streets add may be accepted at any town meeting. Strike shall be accepted only at the annual spring town meeting. D, all materials hereafter referred to as the street acceptance package shall be submitted in entirety to the town administrative's office, add 60 days. Strike before the first business day in January, not later than the last business day of January. Add prior to the town meeting where street acceptance will be placed on the warrant. No changes to paragraph C. Paragraph D is an add. Developers slash property owners who are seeking to have their private wages accepted as public wages shall provide for easements in the town's behalf to allow access for maintenance of all stormwater facilities. Detention slash retention ponds shall be located on separate lots that shall be conveyed to the town at no cost as part of the street acceptance process or permanent easements to the town shall be provided to allow for more access for repair and maintenance of the ponds at the town's sole discretion. Mr. Marcy?
I move to approve Article 23 as recommended and printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion for Article 23? Yes.
Jerry Frank Cosway wrote, I'm just looking for a clarification here where it says the improvements that are needed will be determined by the highway superintendent or designate, planning board or designate. So it says a whole bunch of different places. What if there's a disagreement? I mean, can you just get it approved by one of these people? Or does it all of them have to approve it separately?
I'm sorry, is your question about paragraph, within paragraph C or within the adds and deletions?
Paragraph C, I guess.
All right, there are no changes to that portion of the language. That's existing language. So I'm not going to have a discussion on that.
Moderator Charles Corrigan, 18 Tobin Drive. I have a question on paragraph D where it states detention retention pond shall be located on separate lots that shall be conveyed to the town at no cost as part of the street acceptance. Are they taking the detention basin and are they splitting the lot? I don't understand this language. So if I have an acre lot, the detention basin is a quarter of an acre, they're taking that off of my deed?
Mr. Ruda?
That's correct.
So my lot size is...
The detention retention basin sits, that would be conveyed to the town as its acceptance of the way to give the town the ability to get on there and maintain it.
So my lot will be reconfigured?
Your lot will be reconfigured with the detention basin. Or an easement will be granted for the town to access.
So there's an easement already on the plan? That, there's a tenant, there's an easement to the detention basin, but the detention basin is in the middle of my backyard. So I have a lawn on one side of the yard and there's a neighbor's lawn. So that's kind of, I mean, most detention basins are put on the edge of properties. In this case, it's not.
This was intended for mostly to move forward. Town council was right here. I believe there is an easement currently on it and you're good. There'll be no change. This is going forward, that that final would be conveyed to the...
So if this is voted on and that's not the case, who would like to get that amended? The Planning Board? I mean, I understand hearsay. I don't see anything in writing.
I see town council right here and he's going to forward like...
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeffrey Blake. I'm here with KP Law, your town council. Thank you for having me. Your question was, it does say that detention or retention pond shall be located on separate lots that shall be conveyed to the town at no cost as part of the street acceptance process. And your town administrator was correct. That's likely to move forward. So moving forward, when we have a subdivision, we're going to make sure that those lots are on separate lots. Or permanent easements to the town shall be provided to allow for access for repair and maintenance of the ponds at the town's sole discretion. And in your case, what you've given us, since there are a number of those older ones out there that likely have detention or retention ponds on lots that are owned, then the town will be looking for a permanent easement. Essentially, what the town wants to be able to do, if we're going to take this over, that's an integral part of a road system and/or, and drainage system, and we have to be able to get on there. We currently have situations where we have, where we are not able to get in and make the necessary repairs to the retention detention ponds because we don't have the ability to get on there. So moving forward, this is what we want to do. And in your case, for example, if you're going to have a road that is being accepted ultimately, either one of those is going to have to be taken care of. Likely in your case, it's going to be the permanent easement because the town, most likely in most situations, not interested in redrawing law lines. The separate lots is just that, that's for moving forward. So we, moving forward, we will have a separate lot that's either given to the town or this permanent easement at the discretion of the town. And it will exercise that discretion as it sees fit, but under the guidelines that I've just given you. I'm fairly certain that in your situation, it would be a request for a permanent easement. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Any additional discussion for Article 23? Seeing and hearing none, we'll pass Article 23 to a vote. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. That's an eighty-two percent majority. Article 23 is passed. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from Wendy L. Salingo and Suzanne J. Miller, FKA Suzanne J. Valley, or from then current donors pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77(c). A parcel of land identified by the assessors as parcel 104-3, which is shown on a plan shown entitled Subdivision Plan Tobin Farm Estate dated 9/24/2002, recorded with the Worcester County District. Worcester South District Registry of Deeds and the Plan Book 786, Plan 89, and is a portion of the premises described in the deed reported in Book 25027, Page 167, which parcel is subject to tax takings held by the treasurer collector for unpaid real estate taxes. Said parcel to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectment for general purposes and for the purposes of conveyance and to authorize the Board of Selectment to accept and report the deed provided by the Board of Selectment, determines that the deed complies with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77(c), and to convey said parcel on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectment deems appropriate or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
Board of Selectmen recommends approving Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. For Article 24, is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bryer?
I would just like to know what the value of the unpaid taxes are and also what is the value of the lot and make sure that the value of the lot will actually cover the unpaid taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
Mr. Moderator, this piece of land is, should have been reported in the Registry of Deeds back in 2005 as another step towards acceptance of Tobin Farms. It's considered a piece of conservation in the development. The value is, it's been conveyed to the town and reported essentially. It's not necessarily intended to cover taxes.
Sorry. I was having trouble hearing you up here by the speaker, but I was able to move. If you could just speak louder, please.
The intent was to make this, this development complete. It was never properly reported in the Registry of Deeds in 2005. It wasn't intended necessarily to cover any old taxes. I believe that entire situation ended in a neighbor's. This is one step to make that neighborhood closer to being accepted as a public right. Does that answer your question?
Usually foreclosure, because it says, right, you know, foreclosure, unpaid taxes, usually there's a monetary value associated with that. I understand. I mean, if it was just a matter of them donating it to clear up the subdivision, to close it out, then they could simply offer the land to the town and the town would accept like it did a little earlier with the Piazza Road. The language here sort of gets them out of a foreclosure process, it appears. And so if there's a foreclosure process, it's what they are. So it's a little different than the Piazza Road language earlier. You see what I'm saying?
I do, and I'm going to, once again, ask town council to clarify.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Jeffrey Blake. With respect to the foreclosure process, you are correct. We can go forward and we can spend the money to go through a foreclosure at the land court and we will ultimately foreclose on property and get it. Or we could circumvent that whole process, less legal fees, less costs, and just accept it in lieu of the foreclosure. It's going to be foreclosed on for tax title. So rather than go through the whole process and end up here, we might as well leapfrog that, accept it in lieu of taxes, in lieu of foreclosure, and just accept it. We are going to get it either way.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Paul McGowan, 12 Tobin Drive. So if you are saying this correctly, you guys, as a town, we're going to take this over, are you now becoming lot 41 and going to pay for the betterment of Tobin Drive? That's $490,000. I want you guys to be proud of. Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Mr. Blake.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. That will depend on a lot of things. And with respect to whether or not it's actually a buildable lot is one thing. And secondly, whether or not the town will be exempt from the betterment required.
Excuse me, we're not going to have any back and forth without the formal, thank you. Mr. Carminiani, appreciate it, noted.
Good evening. Rich Carminiani, Airport Road, Rich Carminiani, Treasurer Collector. The taxes, I can't quote an exact dollar amount, it's less than $20. If you were in a helicopter, you would see. This is accessible by the power line easement, and it is a portion of the dam that the town took over in 1995. So I'm sure it's a great fishing spot, but it doesn't represent necessarily anything of value. How we get to this point, I believe town council said it best, this is closing a loop. The Planning Board had this to be donated so that the town would own the dam and an adjacent property to it. So in the event work was needed, the work could be done. As far as its value as a buildable lot, it's next to nothing and there is no direct access to it. This is solving the problem by not going to land court and expending the funds. This is a voluntary deed in lieu of the foreclosure. It is a modest amount. It's $515 to submit something to land court. Probably spent at least that in review to get us here. So this is shortening things. This is something that I would advocate for. Its future use is maintenance of the dam and follow land. Nothing really is going to happen on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carminiani. Is there any additional discussion or question for Article 24? All right, seeing and hearing none, Article 24 will push to a vote. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. Ninety-three percent majority pass. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to ban single-use plastic bags for checkout purposes at retail stores and restaurants. Reusable bags and paper bags are allowed to be used and businesses will be strongly encouraged to remind customers to bring and reuse their bags. Exemptions of the ban include, but not limited to, dry cleaning bags, produce bags, or bags at the meat and seafood counters. The measure would be regularly regulated by the Board of Health or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Marcy?
At the request of the petitioner, the Board of Selectmen recommends that this article be tabled. All right, so...
Motion's been made and seconded to table at the request of the petitioner. Is there any discussion for Article 25? Yes. We'll go front to back on this one. Thank you.
Colin Humphries, 10 Lakeside Drive. So I'm not sure why the petitioner has requested to table this, however, I do not think it's a good idea to table this at this time. Plastic bags take 1,000 years to degrade. I see them all over town. They get littered into the woods, into the ecosystems of animals. It hurts the environment, it hurts many creatures, and believe it or not, we eat it and we drink it. When animals, animals that we eat, eat these plastic bags or get it in their system in some cases. I mean, maybe they want to table it for the town meeting, but I don't know. I don't want another six months of plastic bags polluting our environment, polluting our food, polluting our ecosystem. You know, there's only so much we can do right here in Dudley. I recognize that we cannot even come close to solving the entire problem here, but it's a start and we have to do something. You know, I can't control the entire world. Those of us sitting in this room cannot control the entire world, but we can control what we do in this town. This language seems to be very reasonably written. There is still, paper bag use is still allowed. According to this language, there's no required tax on paper bags as there are in some other places. So it would not be a burden to the people of this town. It would not be a burden to anybody's pockets books. It would simply save the environment and it would be a small step towards having a healthier environment and towards having a healthier human population. I strongly recommend that we do not table this and that we take this up right here tonight and approve it because it's important for the future of humanity. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, not Mr. Bryer, the gentleman behind you. He was quicker on the draw. Sorry.
Jerry Frank Cosway wrote, first, two things. First, I want to know, is there, do we know why it's been asked to be tabled? That's my first question. The second, we don't. The other thing is, is that, you know, some time ago, the Dudley Recycling Center opted to go to a single sort recycling. And at that point, they decided not to take plastic bags anymore to be recycled. So they can't be, there's no place to have them recycled like there used to be. So I'm in favor of not tabling this and saying, and going ahead and voting on this because I think we really need to stop getting these plastic bags around. I live on a pond in Dudley where I, you know, boat on it, you know, kayak and row on it almost daily when the weather's nice. And it seems like almost every day I pull a plastic bag out of the water. You know, somebody who's going fishing stops by to get something at the store and on the way they go fishing and then they, maybe accidentally or not accidentally, the bag ends up in the pond. So I'm in favor of actually voting on this article and... So, I'm in favor of actually voting on this article and passing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Friday, Mr. Brier coming up. My, I'm going to inject my two cents into the rationale for tabling. I think it's very important for us to consider, from an economic development perspective, what this will do to our town. We've been sitting down, as a town at Dudley, for a number of years, trying to find ways to engage with the economic development, bring businesses into the community. And if this is going to be a linchpin for some small businesses, I think we need some further study to understand the rationale for the ban, and to be able to move us forward. That's all I've got, though. We have another hand back there. Way at the back, I think that's, on the end, I can't see. Yep. Hi, Jen. Miss Conoy.
Hi, Jennifer Conoyer, Chairman of the Board of Health, West Dudley Road. I can shed light into a little reason. The petitioner came in front of the Board of Health. The Board of Health thinks it's a wonderful idea. It's just unfortunately, at this time, the Town of Dudley shares a health agent with the Town of Webster. The health agent works ten hours a week for the Town of Dudley. That's ten hours a week that she has to do housing complaints, food inspection, any other health-related item that may come in during that time. A normal housing complaint can take anywhere from two to three hours to do a complete inspection. A restaurant inspection can take an hour. We have several restaurants and businesses in town that she needs to inspect. We had him come to the meeting, he had wonderful ideas. We did ask that he work with us, perhaps reach out to some businesses, see what, if someone may be in favor of doing voluntary items. It's just that, at this time, there is no way that our health agent can feasibly enforce a ban on plastic bags. We did, the Board of Health did reach out to some businesses, and businesses are willing to work, but they, like most small businesses, they don't feel a ban is appropriate at this time, right now, with the country the way that it is, with prices and everything the way that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Conoy. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I do want to let the meeting know that I have concerns as to whether or not this would be, how this would be looked at by the Attorney General. The Attorney General, as you may know, approves all bylaws, zoning, and general bylaws. And in my opinion, in order to have a plastic bag banned, I've sat through many town meetings and heard the pros and cons on each side, you'd have to do so through a bylaw. And I question whether or not the Attorney General would consider this a bylaw, and therefore, it would really have no effect, or it would have little effect, other than it would be a so-called sense of the meaning. There are a number of bylaws out there that I'm sure that the Board of Health or the petitioner could work with the Board of Health and come up with this meeting with, that would give you a much better idea of what's going on, and, and more importantly, would likely be able to pass approval by the Attorney General.
Thank you, Mr. Carminani.
Good evening. Rich Carminani, Airport Road. I was the first person to sign the petition. I appreciate the previous speaker's passion in wanting action this evening. To the flip side, we don't want to put anything forward that may fail. And appreciate Town Council's advice. Also appreciate we're putting something in front of the Board of Health that they might not be ready for. If the wise thing to do is to pass over it this evening, it should be in anticipation of a successful process from beginning to end, whether it's bylaw change, onboard with neighboring communities, business, we would do this right. The person who started the petition asked for some help, and I grew broad shoulders, and I said, "I'll help you." Conversely, we want to do it right. So, I would ask that we pass this over in anticipation of a complete solution that tacks all four bases, and we could move forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Brier.
Tip off of five minutes. Oh, take two. They say the road to hell is made with good intentions. I don't think anybody's going to disagree that plastic bags are nuisance, and they're all over the place. But, when you look at the science and the facts behind plastic bags, I mean, I'm just going to quote you from documented studies. First off, a paper bag takes up seven times the space in a landfill, and depending on the density, could be five hundred years to decompose as well. All right? The, you'd have to use a paper bag forty-three times in order to have the same environmental impact as the production of a plastic bag. Studies are out there. Plastic bags are not evil. And more and more, as people have pushed back and want a clean environment, they are using recycled materials, it's degrading a lot quicker. When you look at the health benefits of plastic bags, I believe the number's something like eighty-five times more prone to bacterial infection with your food if you use, you know, the little shopping bag. And by the way, you'd have to use a shopping bag, look like one of those old cotton bags, seventy-one hundred times in order to have the same environmental impact as a plastic bag as far as the production of it. So, you're looking at the end product, you have to look at the whole process into making these things. I'm all for tabling this. I'd like the outright defeat of this, because I just think there needs to be sanity in there. You also have a supermarket in town, which is competing against very large chains, that will be negatively affected by putting in these plastic, a plastic bag ban. I say, if you really want to make a difference, get water bottles included under the bottom bill. You do that? These plastic bags is like that compared to the water bottles that are out there. So, that's all. Please pass it over.
Thanks, Mr. Brier. At this point, I'm just going to go ahead and limit any discussion and debate to the process of passing over. We're not going to get into point, counterpoint, related to environment, not environment. We've had two great arguments there. If this does come forward in the future town meeting, we're going to have a spirited debate, I'm sure. Any additional discussion related to the passover specifically? Yes?
So, I just wanted to know, are we, is the vote going to be on tabling this motion or to pass it over?
Yes, I'm sorry. I used the word "passover" because I was just listening to them. It is to be tabled.
So, can I make an amendment that we pass it over instead of tabling it? Because if we table it, it's not going to come back up at the next town meeting, right?
That's not, no, that's not my interpretation. If we are going to table it, it can come back around.
But it won't automatically, right?
The petitioner has requested that this be tabled. If you'd like to petition additional warrants to Article at a future town meeting, you may do so. This article was by a specific petitioner who requested it to be tabled.
Can I amend it? Do we pass it over?
Mr. Blake? My opinion is no, because the petitioner's not here to enter into debate for his rationale or her rationale. But I'll let Mr. Blake clarify.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. If you lay something on the table, which we're doing here tonight, when the meeting dissolves, that motion dissolves. It is not laid on the table until the fall, where it automatically appears. It dies with the meeting. If we were to continue the meeting till Tuesday, and I definitely will, since this is the last article, then you could move to take it off the table at the next, tomorrow. But, once the meeting is dissolved, the, anything that's left on the table dissolves with it. So, I think your question was, is this going to automatically come back at the fall meeting? And in my opinion, it is not.
Yes.
Once again, Colin Humphries, ten Lakeside Drive. I do understand the concerns of some of our elected officials here in town as to why this should be tabled. I agree that this should be passed over till the next town meeting. However, I do not believe it should be tabled, despite the petitioner asking for this, as we don't know, like you said, if it will come back. And it would take another petition to bring it back if this were to be tabled, and I'm not even sure, I can't get into the mind of the petitioner, but I don't think it's productive to table this. I think it'd be more productive to pass over it. So, I would recommend we defeat the motion to table, and then maybe somebody makes another motion to pass over.
It is the same thing. If passed over, the article still has to be brought back at a future town meeting. Tabling has to be brought back at a future town meeting. The rationale for the petitioner, we can't get into, not here to speak. However, I can tell you that he or she does not want this to move forward based on the facts that he or she understands related to the process here in town.
So, what exactly is the difference between a passover and a table? Blake?
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One thing is called a vote. A motion to table would be a two-thirds. The motion to pass over is a majority. And secondly, a motion to table is just that, it will be laid on the table during the meeting, and anybody could get up and take it off the table. If it's a motion to pass over, it's dead. It dies right then and there. However, with a motion to table, as I explained earlier, in this instance, it would have the exact same effect, because we're going to, you're going to move to table it, a vote's going to be taken, and for the sake of argument, the vote passes by the requisite quantum of vote, and then the next motion is going to be, I want to dissolve the meeting, at which point, it's done. Neither one would be able to automatically bring this article to the fall town meeting. So, in effect, they have the exact same effect.
Thank you.
Seeing and nooo.
Move the question.
We'll move the question, thank you. We do require a two-thirds majority vote to move the question. All in favor of moving? A? B, no. We have moved the question, move into our vote for the tabling of Article 25. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All in favor? A? All opposed? B? That is clear. Eighty-eight percent. So, just for a point of clarification, prior to an entertaining for a motion to adjourn, typically when somebody requests that something be tabled without a reason, I will permit entering into a debate. Normally, if there is a reason provided for the tabling, I will deny any debate and move that question right to a vote. So, just so you understand that moving forward. If that will impact how you vote for me next year, you know, use that how you will. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Made and seconded. We do have to use the clickers for those of you still remaining. Please don't leave if you still have them in your hands, we need a quorum. All in favor of adjourned? A? All opposed? B? Please, just be humorous. Otherwise, we can sit and chat. Hey, gang, nice job. That's my ambulance, I got to say it. Have a great night. Thanks for coming up.